All righty then. Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. Let's go ahead and do the invocation. We have Deacon John Gabriel of St. Catherine of Alexandria Church with us this evening. Good evening. And after that, if you'd stay standing and we'll have the flag salute led by our very own Mr. Stu Stewart.
Let us bow our heads as we pray. Father, on behalf of all gathered here this evening, as well as all the citizens of this city, thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed on us, our families, and on our beautiful and wonderful city of Temecula. I pray for our city council members, Jessica Alexander, James Stewart, Mary Ann Edwards, Zach Schwenk, and Mayor Matt Ron, that you would send the Holy Spirit to guide them this evening during the agenda that is set before them. Grant them, Lord, the wisdom to govern among the conflicting interests and issues that are going on in our city. Give them a true sense of the needs of our people, as well as the confidence and ability to work together. That their discussions, their decisions, what they say and what they do will please you, Father, and will benefit us who live and work in and around our incredible city of Temecula. In your most blessed name, I pray. Amen.
All right, would you place your hand over your heart and repeat after me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Let's go ahead and do the roll call, please.
Councilmember Alexander?
Here.
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Mayor Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schwenk?
Happily here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
All right, so we have a couple of presentations this evening. Let's go ahead and start with the first one. It's a city of proclamation on National Water Safety Month. National Water Safety Month is celebrated as an opportunity to increase awareness of the importance of communicating water safety rules and programs to families and individuals of all ages, whether owners of private pools, users of public swimming facilities, or visitors to water parks. And the citizens of Temecula recognize the vital role that swimming and aquatic-related activities that relate to good physical and mental health and enhance the quality of life for all people. Water safety education plays an essential role in preventing drowning and recreational water-related injuries. And the water recreational industry, as represented by the organizations involved in the National Water Safety Month Coalition, is committed to developing safe swimming facilities, aquatics programs, home pools and spas, and to providing healthy places to recreate, learn, and grow, contributing to the quality of life in our communities. City Council recognizes the pool, spa, water park recreation, and park industries for these ongoing efforts and initiatives to educate the public on pool and spa safety issues. And I, Matt Ron, Mayor, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Temecula, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2022 to be National Water Safety Month. And do we have a representative from the organization here tonight? Yes, we do. If you wouldn't mind coming down and I'll have our Mayor Pro Tem bring that to you. And if you wouldn't mind sharing some words with us?
Of course. Well, good evening, Mayor Ron and city council members. My name is Melissa Davis, and I'm the Aquatics Supervisor for the City of Temecula. It is my pleasure to be here this evening along with Gwen Wilcox, Community Services Manager, Kristin Post, and members of our team, the audience, to accept the proclamation for May is Water Safety Month. As the supervisor of this wonderful team, I can tell you that we spend a great deal of time preparing and practicing lifesaving skills to keep swimmers safe in and around the water in the summer and all year long. But water safety extends far beyond the city pools, especially in Southern California, where swimming is a year-round activity. As we gear up for the busy summer season, this proclamation is a great way to remind families to brush up on their water safety knowledge. It's as easy as the ABCs, the ABCs of water safety, which create layers of protection for swimmers. A is active adult supervision. Keeping both eyes on swimmers in the water is one of the best ways to prevent drownings. B is barriers, fence home pools with a fence that little ones cannot climb. C for classes. Children should take swim lessons, and formal lessons reduce the risk for drowning by 88%. Parents and caregivers should take a CPR class and be ready in an emergency. We will be highlighting the ABCs of water safety and much more at our water safety event on Friday, May 27th, from 6:00 to 8:00 at the CRC. Participants will be able to visit interactive booths, participate in a brief CPR lesson, see a fire truck, and visit various vendors. Bringing water safety to the forefront and spreading information is vital to prevent drowning. Drowning continues to be the number-one cause of accidental death for children ages one to four, and the second-leading cause of death for all children ages 14 and under. In Riverside County, drownings predominantly occur in the summer months from June to August, with the highest rate in July. And in 2021, Riverside County saw 131 drowning incidents with six child fatalities and 26 adult fatalities. Drowning is quick, silent, and preventable. Thank you for proclaiming May as Water Safety Month and helping spread water safety awareness to keep Temecula families safe. And we are available for questions if you have any.
All right, thanks so much.
Yeah, thank you very much. I wanted to, yeah. Wanted to go ahead and present you with this proclamation. So thank you for keeping our families and our youth safe. And I'm continually blown away with the programs that we have. And we are bringing another pool online next year, so that's exciting. I know you're all excited about that over at the Margarita Rec Center. But the way you do things, it's, we hear this all the time, the Temecula way. And it's absolutely just how you work, how you protect our community, and make it fun as well. So we certainly appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Do we want to bring your team up and we can take one photo?
We sure can.
Yeah, can everyone come up, the aquatics team?
Mr. Mayor, I believe there was a young man actually in that group that there was a story that we wanted to relay regarding his CPR and heroic efforts.
Yes, sir. All right, and one of our folks, Mr. Colin Creely. Can you come up to the podium here for a moment? All right, for those of you who are unaware, but it seems like he brought his own massive cheering section. Colin, the City of Temecula is honored to recognize a very heroic act. The 17-year-old Eagle Scout from Troop 148, on Friday, May 20th of this year, participated in the City of Temecula Aquatics Lifeguard Summer Preseason Training, which is a five-hour training focused on scene management, CPR, and AED skills. The very next day, young man, you put into practice what you learned, identifying a woman in a pool having a medical emergency, working with other people at the pool to get the woman out of the water. You assigned someone to do compressions while you went to find the AED and a resuscitation mask. When you got back to the scene, you applied the AED and took over care, providing three rounds of CPR, administering a shock with the AED before EMS arrived and took over. Your heroic efforts had been successful, and the woman you treated was talking in the ambulance before being taken to the hospital. City of Temecula is incredibly proud of just this amazing act only 24 hours after your training. And I don't mean to make you blush, but man, that is just, just an incredible story. And I'd like to invite my colleagues down to the podium to shake your hand because you are the best of what Temecula does, and wanted to thank you so much for your selflessness.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you don't mind, I'm going to put you on the spot. But we get to tell your story, but if you could share with us your story version, please. I'd love to hear it.
A shorter or a long one?
A longer. You're in charge.
Right now?
Go for it.
Okay, so, hi, everyone. I was, like they all said, I am a lifeguard in the city, at the City of Temecula for aquatics. I was playing in a water pool tournament in Huntington Beach. We were scheduled to play at Ocean View High School at a 9:40 game. And so me, my mom, and one of my friends all, we got there at around 8:40 and went to the pool. My coach was in there, and we had to wait about 30, 40 minutes till he came before we got in the water. At this time, there was a lap swim going on for adults. It was like a masters class. And then there was also a, like a, just a normal swim team, but for youth, so like 12 and under. And I was just hanging out with my friends, waiting for the game to start and to get in and warm up. And all of a sudden, I see, I see a lady laying on face, or on her back outside the pool, halfway out with her legs still in the pool. I didn't think anything of it because I know after I swim, because I'm a swimmer as well, I tend to lay down on the pool and catch my breath. So I didn't think anything of it. But about five seconds later, someone called for a backboard. I put my training into use, and I ran over, took the backboard from the lady, because she was stumbling over it. I had to instruct the people in the pool to put her back in the water so I can extricate her out of the water. We pulled her out, and at that time, someone had already checked for pulse, and there was a weak pulse. I said to someone to check the pulse again and to start compressions if there are no, if there's no pulse. I ran over to the local lifeguard center or station, I guess, and not knowing anything about this pool, I ran over and grabbed an AED. This was very funny because the week before, in my kinesiology class, I, one of our assignments was to find AEDs for extra credit. And all of my AEDs that I found were at pools. So I found two at the city pool and then one at Temecula Valley. So I already knew where the AEDs would be. I then grabbed the AED and ran out and instructed people to cut the swimsuit off so we could apply the AEDs. At that time, the AEDs analyzed, and we all stepped clear. While, well, during this, the person who was administering CPR was giving it down at the stomach, which is not right at all. So I said to him, I'm taking over. After the shock was administered, and I quickly jumped into CPR position, and I completed three rounds of 30 compressions to two breaths while instructing someone to give breaths. I had to give a lesson pretty much at that time for how to give breaths. About two, about a minute and a half later, the AED analyzed again and did not administer a shock, meaning she had a pulse. She started to breathe a little bit, and that is when EMS arrived. We got a call last night that she, I think it was, she had to go into surgery and get her arteries cleaned, cleared out because there was a blockage, and she was making a full recovery in the bottom part of the hospital. So she's going to make a full recovery.
Wow.
And I know that representatives from your troop with the VFW are here this evening as well. Wasn't sure if you guys wanted to say a few words. Appreciate you coming out for this very, very important evening.
So I don't, I don't want to take anything away from Colin here. We're, we're looking at doing a lifesaving award. We're not as fast as the city, but. And I want to recognize former Commander Lee. He was also an assistant troop master for your troop. And Colin, I've never met you, but you've worked with the Junior Vice Mark and done a lot of stuff around the post, I'm sure. But you're, you're on the list, and we're moving forward with the, with the lifesaving award for Colin.
All right.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much. Let's get a shot. Yes, absolutely. All right.
Can I share one thing? I'm a scout master for Colin. Here in July, we awarded Colin his Eagle Scout, and he took a promise at that point in time to make his training an example and his rank and influence. And his scout masters are incredibly proud of him. And we have submitted his information to the S.A. Nationals, and he will be getting a heroic lifesaving award for Boy Scouts of America.
Wow.
Well, let's call it a night. You know, no, I mean, you know, the mayor's theme this year is Temecula Safe, and boy, you embody all of, all of that right there. So thank you once again. All right, tough act to follow, but I'm going to move on to our board and commission reports. And I'm going to start this evening with Denise Wilson.
There we go. All right, got it together now. So good evening, Mayor, City Council Commissioners, staff, and our guests. My name is Denise Wilson, and I am the Chair of the Race Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Commission, and also served with Commissioner Eventhal, Commissioner Faulkner, Commissioner Letchers, Commissioner Steed, and Commissioner Pastorian. And I have some good things to share with you today. Our ready commission is made up of residents who serve together as an advisory group to the city council. We make recommendations on topics of diversity and inclusion within city events, services, programs, and policies that enhance our community relations. Our last meeting was on May the 12th, and we had two awesome presentations. The first one we had was regarding Minority Veterans Program. And the coordinator, her name is Nico Willingham, she reviewed topics including health care for minority veterans, ethnic veterans population and their experiences, and the ability of the VA program to address trauma and whole health for women veterans through the Minority Veterans Program at Loma Linda. So we look forward to hearing more about that program. Another guest presentation was the Cultural Fest. Dawn from the Community Service, our superintendent, she reviewed the topics that were going to be included, the vendors' participation, the list of those, the education, the entertainment, and the boards and commission booths that we were expecting to be there. And there's the slide right there. So speaking of the Cultural Fest, I just wanted to let, I know, take a, breathe all of that in because it gets better. So speaking of the Cultural Fest, it was an amazing event with a wonderful performance representing many different ethnicities. The performances by the children were especially entertaining, not to mention the diverse music that, that was played. And some of the commissioners were out there cutting a rug, and some of the staff, not to mention any names, but we had a fabulous time. Many of the cultures that were represented through the ventures, the vendors, and the booths participated had an awesome time. The estimated count was over 5,000 participants, which is great for our very first year. So we need to give them an applause for that. That's awesome. Our city council board and commission members and staff were also in attendance, along with many residents and families. And it was a joyous event for all. Everyone that stopped by the commission booth with their passport that they got stamped as they went to different booth, they had nothing but great things to say about this event and said they would definitely be back next year. So that brings me to my next topic. So next year, we are inviting you back for our Cultural Fest 2023. It's going to be held on Saturday, May the 20th, and it's going to coincide with the World Cultural Diversity Day, and we want everyone to be out in attendance. We hope to see everyone there. And finally, a big thank you again to our city council for your support, for all the work for this event, and also for our Legislative Director, Randy Joel, because she was always getting us, you know, involved, making sure this thing happened. So now, TSCD made a short video, and we would like to play the video now. Thank you so much. And that completes my report.
All right, wonderful. Thank you. All right, Mr. Watts, how are we doing with the planning commission?
Very well, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, city council members and staff and members of the audience. We met last week, and there's a picture of all of your planning commissioners there. I am the Chair. And one of the things that the planning commission is required to do by state law is to review the city's, next slide, please, review the city's capital improvement program. And we were given a presentation on that, and one of our responsibilities is to make sure that the capital improvement program is consistent with the city's general plan. And we did so and forwarded on to the council for further action. So that was our meeting, and that's the end of my report. Any questions?
All right, thank you so much, sir.
You're welcome.
And last but not least, Community Services Commission. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Kathryn Seismar, Chair of the Community Services Commission. Our last meeting was Monday, May 9th, 2022. We are a commission of five, and I would say the commissioners that are on our commission really represent a wide variety of Temecula as far as our family, the makeup of our family, age of our kids, the activities we're involved in. We really represent a good example of everything community services offers. Our, what we do is we review the elements of the community services plan. Yeah, there, I lost my words. So next slide. At our last meeting, we too received a presentation on the capital improvement program. We reviewed it. We found it in line with the elements of the community services master plan, an element of the city's master plan. We also shared highlights of our experiences in April's events that the different commissioners participated in and provided some feedback. A highlight of the events we participated in included the Easter egg hunt, Arbor Day, and the rod run. And I wanted to mention, I had had the opportunity to go down to Mary Phillips Community Center to participate in the Cinco de Mayo event that they held for the seniors that meet there. And I was really just overwhelmed with the love and compassion our city staff has for the residents that participate in their activities and events. They truly have relationships with the residents that meet there, and it was just beautiful to witness. I loved, just overwhelmed and filled with joy. And I think it lasted me for a good week. So I need to go back to Mary Phillips so I can get refreshed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chief Crater, how are we doing on the fire side?
I gotta hit the button. Mayor, city council members and staff, and Temecula citizens, I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. And I'd like to give the numbers for April 2022, Temecula Fire Department. As you could see, it ran 826 calls, 625 of those were medical-related calls, 15 fires total, and 58 traffic collisions in the city. Next slide, please. As far as the fire prevention side and doing plan reviews, 452 were done in the month of April. Construction inspections, 377. Our mandated annual inspections, 662. And people coming into city hall and turning in paperwork or getting their plans looked at, 36. And our yearly totals are ahead of last year. One more thing I wanted to bring up, because the theme is Temecula Safe, is we had been out in the community with our fire paramedic specialist, Matt Hayes, and we've been doing a lot of stop the bleed and sidewalk CPR. I think we heard the benefits from that earlier tonight with this young man saving somebody's life the next day after the training. So it's very important to us as a fire department to get out and be in the community and get out to our high schools and teach this. So just in the Heart Saver CPR for the month of April, we had 33 attend the class, Heart Saver First Aid, 25 BLS CPR. This is a separate class that we do, and this might be like city personnel. Two Stop the Bleed, two Fire Extinguisher Training, five, and then our Teensir Program, which we're very involved with, 15. And that is the training that some of you have attended before. I'd like to go over a couple of things that we did, sending Matt out to Great Oak High School on 420, doing sidewalk CPR, Stop the Bleed education, and event at a, at the Assembly. Community partners included Temecula Valley Hospital, Inland Valley Hospital, Emergency Nurse Association, Cal Fire Station 92, Emergency Management Office of Temecula, TCSD also took part, teaching over 400 students the importance of CPR and Stop the Bleed. The students were offered a hands-on time with mannequins and various demonstration aids. And the students that could not attend, at lunchtime, we also held an event at lunchtime where 400, 149 students attended and participated with city staff to give them opportunity as well for these lifesaving measures. And then we went over to Temecula Valley High School and hosted a career day, which Matt said that the mayor suggested, so it was your idea. But that was very well received. It was a, it was a career day where there was some Q and A, and, you know, students got to ask about fire department, they got to ask about emergency-related jobs with nursing staff. And we reached out to about 400 students in attendance on that day. And then on 427, we also went back to Great Oak High School for a career technology education event on their campus and reached out to over 580 students. So in the month of April, in the community, we were able to teach or demonstrate CPR, Stop the Bleed, to over 1,000 of our residents. So we're very proud of that, and we hope to continue this month as well. Thank you.
Wonderful. Any questions, colleagues? No? All right, thanks so much, chief. All right, moving on, public comment, non-agenda.
We have none.
What?
Yes, please let me repeat that. We have no public comments tonight on non-agendized items.
Oh.
Oh, Brandon.
Brandon.
Hello, Mr. Lane.
Welcome to the City of Temecula. Good evening.
You know, I wasn't going to speak, but I've gotten several texts from people asking me why I'm here this evening. And I just came here this evening to sit in a city council meeting and listen to what was going on in the City of Temecula. But I'll say this. I went to the school board meeting. But I'll say this, I went to the school board meeting in the city of Murrieta. I served, for those of you who don't know me, I served as a planning commissioner in the city of Murrieta for five and a half years. I served as an elected official there for almost 12. I stepped down to go work for the president in DC for a few years. And I've worked at the state level with Kevin Jeffries, who's now county supervisor. So I've had the opportunity to serve as an elected official or someone who worked in government at every level of government. And so tonight, my public comment will be this, thank you for what you do. It takes a lot of time and energy to serve at the local level. Unfortunately, we have seen our national politics bleed down into our local politics. And I will say that you have the best job of all. You have the opportunity to have an impact on people's lives, to be able to hand out certificates for young men, I apologize, I forget your name, to young men like him who do great things in the community, to be a part of the planning commission, you know, the community service division, to be a part of a new commission, the Ready Commission, and to be able to see your community grow and have direct impact on that community. At the federal level, we got to see it at the larger level, but we did not have the opportunity to have that direct impact like you have at the local level. And so I will say this on my way out of your meeting this evening, thank you for what you do. It takes time, energy, and we all know you don't get paid a ton of money to do this. And I just want to say, as a member of the community to your north, thank you for the work that you do to make this region, this valley, a great, great valley. Thank you very much, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Mr. Lane.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Lane's comments were the only comments for tonight. Thank you, Mr. Lane.
All right, we'll take them. All right, moving on, city council reports. Who would like to go first? Mr. Stewart?
Sure. Just to piggyback on Denise's comments, the Culture Fest, and I'm sure we're all going to probably put comments out on that. It was a really, really fun event. It was really cool to see all the different cultures that were there represented. And I envision next year, it's going to even get more diverse and more hands-on, where you can actually learn about these other cultures and little intricacies of these cultures. So I'm looking forward to next year already. So thanks again, TCSD, for putting this together.
All right, thank you. Who would like to go next? Mr. Swank?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll go ahead and go have a couple of quick slides. So this Friday, we will be cutting the ribbon on the Old Town Creek Walk. And for those of you who don't know, this creek walk is just on the west side of Old Town, and it runs from much past the south end down there in Santiago, all the way up to Rancho California Road. This project is "much anticipated" is the term I like to use. This has been a long-awaited project, so we'll be cutting the ribbon on that. And then on Saturday, June 4th, we'll be celebrating National Trails Day. We did this a couple of years ago. Actually, we did this along this creek path, maybe five or six years ago, kind of cut the ribbon on that. We'll be doing it out near Somers Bin at their new park and ride out there. We'll have staff, commissioners, myself, anyone else certainly invited to come. We'll be hosting some trail rides, as well as there'll be information for the public on what's to come, connecting Somers Bin to Old Town along the Santa Curtis Creek Path. So that is again Saturday, June 4th. And then I'll just speak very briefly to Culture Fest. Went down early in the morning, it was like 9:30, and it was already pretty well full. There was a lot of people there bright and early and stayed throughout the day. Ended up riding my bike home, grabbing our boys, and coming right back and stayed down and tried to eat. I paced myself, I tried to eat like a little something from every vendor, but it was nice. I just wanted to just say thank you to, obviously, my colleagues for supporting it, staff for being involved, the Ready Commission did a great job on giving that vision and putting this event out into the community. So appreciate all the work on that, and all the commissions. Honestly, everyone had input on it, which was great. I walked around, talked to many of the vendors and the folks that were there, and introduced myself, and repeatedly heard thank you, how much we appreciate this event, how much it means to them to be a part of something like this. And you would hear the story, I've lived here for 20 years, I've lived here for 25 years, and this is so meaningful. So I kept hearing those comments over and over. So yeah, it was a pretty wonderful day. And like I said, thanks to everyone involved, but really thanks to the community for supporting it. Clearly, it was a much appreciated event, and everyone had a blast. And I'm certainly looking forward to this being an annual event. It was a good day, thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Me.
Ms. Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also was at the Cultural Fest, and I've always been fascinated by the Polynesian dancers because I don't think it's physically possible to move your hips in that way. And so I talked to a couple of the instructors, and I decided to put together a group of women who want to go in like I and see, I don't think it's possible to teach me to do it, but I would love to learn how to do it. So, you know, if I'm going to, Jessica, you're already on the list, and you didn't even know it. So I'm going to put together a group of, you know, ladies from around City Hall, and Jessica, and they don't know it either at City Hall, so this is a surprise to them. And we're going to take that class, and maybe by next Culture Fest, we'll be able to get out there. Now, I will be wearing a full jogging suit with my, yeah, doing the Polynesian dancing, not the skirt and everything else. But so I have always wanted to learn to do that, and so, you know, that's on the bucket list and a goal for next year. So council member Stewart and I attended an annual event, and it's not really an event, it's an annual convention that's held in Las Vegas. And this is one of the largest conventions that's held there. And if you've ever seen the Las Vegas Convention Center, it's absolutely huge, several million square feet. This is the International Council of Shopping Centers, and it is every retail business you can imagine. It's every developer, every real estate firm and broker, attorneys are there. You know, everything from Dollar Tree up to, you know, Nordstrom have booths there. And the whole purpose of this is for cities to go and meet with all these different businesses and try and convince them to come to your city. Temecula is unique in that people come to us, really, and it's amazing. Temecula has such a great reputation, a great place to do business, great chamber, great customer base. And they come to us and say, we're trying to get to Temecula, can you help us find some property? And that is what our expert here at City Hall, Christine Damco, does. She's, you know, works in economic development. And so we look at parcels and vacancy spaces and like that and try to fit some of these great businesses into those spaces. And the businesses we have here in town have come to Temecula, a lot of them as a result of our going and meeting with them year after year after year at ICSC. And a perfect example of that is the Cheesecake Factory. We wanted Cheesecake Factory for years, and so every year we'd go to ICSC, we'd make an appointment to meet with them, and they were anxious to get to Temecula, so we had to figure out a way to get them here and work with them all, and they had to rebuild the space, and it was very complex. But ICSC gives us that opportunity to meet with companies that we wouldn't be able to meet with otherwise. And businesses come from all over the world, and developers come from all over the world. There are about 70,000 people walking around the convention center. And so we walked, I couldn't tell you how many steps, tens of thousands of steps. We had an appointment every 30 minutes, starting at 9 o'clock in the morning, and we went until 4 o'clock in the afternoon. So we met with some great businesses again this year, things that we have on our list, and Whole Foods is one of those, and I won't tell you some of the others. But just know that we are out working, and it's a lot of work to walk that far and meet with that many people, but great experience. And just know that Temecula is really a desirable place to so many businesses, and so we want to capture as many as we can. So we'll keep you posted. Thanks, Mr. Lane.
All right. I think maybe I have one slide. Do I? There it is. Oh, why'd you use those pictures? So we did the State of the City last week, and for those of you who weren't in the audience, I just want to let you know that we will be doing a mini State of the City across our various districts and jurisdictions here, starting in June. So it's sort of a condensed-down version, you don't get the pipes and drums and the fanfare, but you're stuck with me. And I'll just give you an update on where we are as a city. It's a good story, it was well-attended, it was a very positive morning. But I was telling everybody that it's, you know, a good meeting and a good State of the City because the message is so positive, and Temecula is doing so well, and we have such wonderful people that we work with here at the city. And I just thank you to everybody who helped make that happen, and also my council colleagues for attending and helping make Temecula the wonderful place it is. So that was all, thank you so much. All right, tonight we have a very robust consent calendar. The items here will start, wave reading of standard ordinances resolutions, approve action minutes of May 10, 2022, approve list of demands, number three. Number four, approve city treasurer's report as of November 30, 2021. And number five, approve cooperative agreement with nonprofit seniors' golden years of Temecula Valley in support of various senior services activities. Six, approve agreement with Temecula Valley Unified School District for interim use of Temecula Valley High School pool facilities. Item number seven, adopt list of projects to be funded by Senate Bill 1, SB 1, for fiscal year 2022-23. Item number eight, approve the initial study and adopt mitigated negative declaration for the Diaz Road expansion project. Pretty much everything on the list from here on out is all Pat's shop and Public Works, so bear with me because there's a lot. Approve purchase and sale agreement for acquisition of certain property interests on assessors, parcel number 910100018, in connection with the I-15 French Valley Parkway improvements, Phase 2, PW 16-01. Ten, approve agreement for consultant services with DUDAC for the citywide drainage master plan, PW 19-16. Eleven, approve first amendments to annual professional services agreements for geotechnical and materials testing services for Department of Public Works Capital Improvement Program, CIP, Division for Fiscal Years 2020 through 24. Item number 12, approve first amendment to annual professional services agreements for property acquisition services for Department of Public Works Capital Improvement Program, Division for Fiscal Years 2020 through 2024. And item number 13, approve second amendment to the minor maintenance agreement for landscape maintenance services with Neves Landscape, Inc. Item number 14, approve third amendment to agreement with David Evans and Associates, Inc. for the Diaz Road Expansion Project, PW 17-25. Item number 15, approve plans and specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for sidewalks citywide in Diaz Road between Rancho Highland and Tierra Vista Drive, PW 17-28. Sixteen, approve the plans and specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for the Fire Station 84 renovation, PW 19-14. Seventeen, approve plans and specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for the traffic signal installation citywide Rancho California Road and T Drive, PW 19-19. Eighteen, approve plans and specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for citywide concrete repairs fiscal year 2021 through 22, PW 20-22-01. Item 19, approve specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for the pavement rehabilitation program Meadowview Paloma del Sol Project, PW 21-06. And finally, item number 20, set public hearing to approve solid waste and recycling and SB 1383 compliance fee on commercial collection rates for commercial customers for fiscal year 2022 through 23.
Move approval.
Second. All right, please cast your votes. All right, and that passes 5-0, and it looks like Public Works is going to be incredibly busy here, but thank you so much for all your hard work. And I'm going to reconvene or...
No.
No.
Adjourn.
Adjourn to the community services meeting.
And I will convene the community services district meeting. Madam Secretary, please note, we're all still here. Do we have any public comments?
We do not.
All right. So the consent calendar, item number 21, approve action minutes of May 10, 2020. And 22, set public hearing to approve TCSD proposed rates and charges for fiscal year 2022-23.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and please vote. And that passes 5-0. So we're off to the community, or the Director of Community Services report.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We have two items this evening. The first one is, I'd like to go over a few of our upcoming events. If you would like to join us for ribbon cutting and refreshments, we'll be opening our fourth pump track at Wolf Creek Park at 2:00 PM this Wednesday. And we chose Wednesday because it's an early release day, so we're hoping some of the kids can come over and enjoy that brand-new mini pump track. So we're now up to a giant pump track at Ronald Reagan, a very mini, mini pump track at Ronald Reagan, and then our two most recent, I would call them medium-sized pump tracks, at Long Canyon Creek, and now this new one at Wolf Creek Park. Also this Friday is the First Annual Water Safety Event at the CRC from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. The aquatics team, who you met earlier this evening, has partnered with police and fire to provide valuable resources to the community to teach swimmers of all ages the importance of safety around the water, which obviously we've heard a lot of firsthand, and we understand why that's so important. And our aquatics team has been recognized for their training at the national levels. They have really extraordinarily conscientious approach to water safety within our community. They've expanded programming to reach every single person they possibly can, and they just really do a great job of that. And then finally, please mark your calendars for the Saturday, May 28 Memorial Day observance, and enjoy a patriotic-themed concert performed by the Temecula Valley Symphony as we pay tribute to our nation's heroes in honor of Memorial Day. The program will be right out in front of City Hall, and it will begin at 6:30 PM. And now I'd like to call up our YAC team with Cassandra Ambreeze, and she will be introducing this wonderful group of young people who will summarize for you what they've done this past year.
Hello and good evening, Mayor, city council members and fellow staff, and everyone in the audience. So for those of you who do not know me, my name is Cassandra Ambreeze, and I am the Community Services Specialist with the City of Temecula's Community Services Department, Human Services Division. Tonight, I have the honor of presenting the Temecula Youth Advisory Council. They're a group of truly exceptional students who go to high school in Temecula, and they have served the community through various programs, activities, and events. If we can go to the next slide. Oh, I think I have control, right? Yeah, there we go. So for those of you who do not know, the Youth Advisory Council, otherwise known as YAC, is a service-based organization that focuses on youth leadership, service learning, volunteerism, and academic achievement for all. This program is intended for our local high school students, and it creates opportunities for community involvement through intergenerational programming, professional development, building, oh, sorry, yeah, building community rapport and civic leadership. Tonight, we will be sharing with you some of the achievements of the Youth Advisory Council throughout this year. And at this point, I would like to turn it over to our YAC president, Jerelyn Mendoza, who has been an active member and leader in YAC for four years. Thank you.
Hello, good evening, I'm Jerelyn Mendoza, and I'll just be highlighting some of the activities and events that we were able to accomplish this year. So starting earlier this year, or 2021, we were involved with the Friendship Park mural project, where a couple of us YAC students were able to help lay down the base paint layers at the Friendship Park. If you've seen the big snack shop with the inclusivity mural with everything, and as well as the mosaic, we painted some of those tiles. We also did a holiday food drive, where we collected over 850 items for our local community, and that was in partnership with the Temecula Teen Library Council and the Community Mission of Hope. We also did a couple of workshops this year, such as the Financial Literacy Workshop, which was done by Charles Walker and the Ultra Credit Union. We were also involved in the Health and Community Resources Fair, where we had our own booth, and we sold cookies and other refreshments to raise money for our projects. As for our special events, we hosted a Halloween carnival, as well as participated in the Special Games and the Citywide Easter Egg Hunt. Games and the Citywide Easter Egg Hunt. Furthermore, our intergenerational programs, we were involved in those through writing letters to seniors and forming pen pals. And these are just some of our pictures. So that's us at the Friendship Park ribbon cutting, as well as our food drive and the health fair. Some more pictures. And as for the other programs that we were involved with, we did a lot with the skip program this year, assisting with planning crafts and activities, as well as hosting many like holiday events for them. We also worked with High Hopes and assisted with their various programs throughout the year. We also worked with the Community Garden at the Mary Phillips Senior Center. We were able to maintain that during some of our Wednesday meetings. We also had the World Down Syndrome Day, where we tie-dyed socks for the Rock Your Socks component of the World Down Syndrome Day event, and those were given to all of the participants. Finally, our inclusive social skills program. We did more crafts with them and even spent the month of April working at the Friendship Park and playing with children there with special needs, and hosted a sports day clinic and a lot more. So those are some pictures of us tie-dying and at Friendship Park. Lastly, we also did a lot of trainings. So we had an inclusive sensitivity training, and then a cooking and nutrition workshop, a mental health workshop, public speaking workshops, resume workshops, and community building activities, where we as a group got to bond and get to know each other to really just encourage that sense of community within us. So I'll be turning it back over to Cassandra.
Wow.
So our YAC students have done quite a bit this year, and they continue to just inspire me. They're such a great group of students, and I really honestly am just taken back by how great they are, how kind they are, how supportive they are, and how they uplift each other in their successes and how they're there for each other throughout everything. So they're really a great group of students. You know, they come from different schools, so all throughout Temecula, and they've formed this great network together. And so just, you know, there's so many words that I would like to put together, but just it all kind of boils down to just really I'm so proud of you all. You're amazing students, and I'm so lucky to know you all. We have some students who will be graduating this year, and it's very bittersweet. I will definitely miss them, but I just wanted to recognize them and the schools that they're going to be attending in the fall. So Jerelyn, who goes by Jelly, Mendoza will be attending the University of California Riverside in the fall. And Miriam Agaiibi, did I say that right, Miriam? Okay, good. Will be attending University of California Riverside in the fall as well. These two are like peas in the pod, so I'm already so excited for their future there, and I know great things will come. Andrea Nuneo, who is not here, will be attending the University of California Irvine in the fall. Rachel Palacio will be attending Mount San Jacinto Community College in the fall, and Larissa Alvarado will be attending Orange Coast Community College. So just really great schools, really great students. I'm so proud of them, and if we could just give them a round of applause.
And then I believe our TCSD presidents, Stu Stewart, will be handing out certificates of completion for the students.
So we do have certificates of participation in this program, and community service is a big deal. And I think you guys have all experienced the value that that brings to your life. I mean, don't you enjoy doing things for other people? I mean, and that's the important part about community service is when you start giving back is when you actually get. So I will read off your first name because there's a lot of difficult last names here. So Kayla. Kalia, I'm sorry. Kalia. Benjamin. Chloe. Chloe. Landon. Jerelyn. Jane. Chloe Jacobson. Anna. Aaliyah. Seth. Eva. Larissa. Gianna. And Miriam. Here, come over here.
President Stewart, may I?
Yes.
Thank you. Cassandra, I just wanted to say before, and everyone can continue to sit down, that's fine, but I just wanted to say how much I appreciate the time and energy you put into this and Youth Advisory Council. You do a wonderful job, so thank you as well. And then to the students, I genuinely appreciate the work you do in the community. And it seems like we say this often, you know, thanking folks for what they do, but this is truly why we are who we are. It's all of you. It's the energy that everyone puts in and puts back into our community, so thank you. I couldn't help but notice in the presentation there was a bake sale to raise funds. Was that for a specific project, or do we need to talk about your budget at our next meeting? Okay. All right. Well, if in the future, maybe we'll have that discussion to make sure that you have the resources you need to impact our community. So... Understood. Thank you. Thanks.
All right. Are you done?
Nothing further, Mr. President.
All right. Perfect. General Manager's Report.
How do you top that?
Right?
Yeah. You know, I just wanted to comment that we heard earlier about aquatics and then special events, and now YAC, and I see how they create community through people, parks, and programs. So our congrats and thank you.
Yeah. Perfect. Any other directors' reports? All right. So I will adjourn this meeting to the next one.
All right. We're gonna go ahead and reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting and go with our public hearing. Let's see. Item number 23 this evening is adopt ordinance repealing and replacing Title VI of the Temecula Municipal Code and make modifications to Title XVII of the Municipal Code regarding the keeping, maintenance, and possession of dogs, cats, fowl, and other animals. Long Range Project LR 21-0130. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. My name is Mark Collins. I'll be presenting the animal ordinance to you this evening. I'm just gonna give you a little background. Since 1995, the city has contracted with Animal Friends of the Valley, and they have provided the city with a complete program for animal control, including but not limited to fieldwork, complaint and investigative services, sheltering our lost, excuse me, stray or abandoned pets, and quarantine and control of rabid animals. Additionally, they also remove and perform removal of deceased animals in the public right-of-way. Title VI Animals was last comprehensively updated in 1995. This ordinance is necessary to comply with SB 573's microchip requirements, consolidate animal keeping standards, remedy a land use inconsistency, and clarify animal setback requirements measured to adjacent property line. Animal Control by the Numbers. Temecula has averaged 186 animal actions over the 2021, with a return rate for cats of 9% and 33% for dogs. Pretty low. So the changes proposed in this ordinance, we're gonna reorganize Title VI for ease of use for staffs and citizens. We're gonna require mandatory spay and neutering of cats and dogs with exceptions provided. We're gonna require mandatory microchipping of cats and dogs with exceptions provided. And we're gonna require cleaning up after your dog on public property. Additionally, we're gonna codify the right to rescue protections. The changes proposed to Title XVII, we're gonna relocate animal keeping standards into Title VI. Makes sense. It's animals. And we're gonna convert them to table form with no change to existing standards. And we're gonna clarify that animal shelters requires a conditional use permit and is not a by right land use. Title VI Animals, the changes do not change the number or breed of animals that may be kept, change animal keeping standards. Title XVII changes do not permit any new land uses or change zoning designation of any property. This item was brought to the, forgive me, the Planning Commission Municipal Code Maintenance Subcommittee on the April 20th and on the City Council Public Safety Subcommittee on the 26th of April. Additionally, the draft ordinance was presented on May the 4th at a duly noticed public hearing of the Planning Commission. No public speakers were present, and no public comments were received. A resolution was passed 4 to 0 recommending that the City Council adopt the proposed ordinance. Secret Determination Staff has determined that the proposed ordinance is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to Title XIV, Chapter III of the California Code of Regulation, Section 15061, subsection B3. Staff recommendation that the City Council adopt the proposed changes to Title VI and Title XVII. This completes my report. I'm available for any questions.
All right. Let's start with questions. Anything from the City Council? All right.
I have a comment, but not a question.
Seeing none. Let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Well, how about comments from the City Council? Ms. Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am honored to serve on the Joint Powers Authority, and this is a group of five cities in the County of Riverside that came together to form the JPA. We actually built the animal shelter, so it is owned by all of those cities in the county, and it's only used by those cities and the county area that is, that falls within the boundaries of what is acceptable to the JPA. And we are, I don't know if we're the, one of the last cities to make mandatory the microchipping of pets, but I think that we might be. And I know that all my other fellow cities that belong to the JPA have done so and have been... And Animal Friends has also been very vocal about the importance of chipping your dogs. And you can see the return rate of cats at 9% and 33%, but if they're chipped, I mean, it's hugely high number, you know, up in the 90% of chipped animals. And in fact, if they have that microchip, they don't even have to take that animal to the shelter. They can chip it right there, or they can read it right there at the truck when they find the animal, and they will contact the owner immediately right there, and then they'll deliver that animal right to the house or the business, whatever. So microchipping your pet, you know, it's not expensive, but it's one of those things where if you don't do it and something happens, you'll spend the rest of your life wishing that you had. And so it's a one-time thing, and so I'm glad we're doing this finally. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? All right. Well, I'm gonna go ahead and close that public hearing. And we're looking for...
Move approval.
Motion. And a second, please.
And I'll read the title. This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula repealing and replacing Title VI of the Temecula Municipal Code regarding the keeping, maintenance, and possession of dogs, cats, fowl, and other animals, and providing for the control, licensing, and welfare thereof. Modifying Title XVII of the Temecula Municipal Code regarding animal keeping and making a finding that this ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to SEQA Guidelines, Sections 15061B3, Long Range Project Number LR 21-0130.
All right. That passes 5-0. Thank you all so much. Yes, sir.
So I have a kind of an odd question. So it said fowl. So does that mean if you have chickens, you have to have them microchipped? And if your chicken gets eaten by a coyote, and now you can follow the microchip all over the...
Oh, my gosh.
I know. My mind started thinking that. It's like, do they microchip fowl? I mean, are chickens gonna get microchipped?
Not that I know of.
Dogs and cats.
Dogs and cats only.
Dogs and cats.
Dogs and cats only. But I do think that's a very interesting idea.
Right?
About the coyotes, yes.
I see a new business in your future, Stu. The fowl man, chip man. All right. So moving on to business. Item number 24 this evening is consider update regarding proposed memorial and monument policy at the request of Members Alexander and Stewart. And I believe Ms. Joel is giving her report this evening.
I am, Mr. Mayor, and we will go ahead and see if the... Okay, there we are. So we have tonight before you some general consideration in regards to a public recognitions policy. Next slide, please. As you'll recall, on November 9, 2021, Councilmember Stewart requested that an item be placed on a future agenda to consider the creation of a memorial and monument policy. On December 14, the City Council approved the creation of a subcommittee consisting of Councilmembers Alexander and Stewart to work with staff on the creation of such a policy. Next slide. On February 15, the subcommittee met with staff to do the following. First, to review the existing naming of parks and recreation facilities policy, to review our Art in Public Places ordinance, and how our previous memorials and monuments were approved. For example, the Duck Pond Memorial and Garden commemorating our sister-city relationship and how that came to be. Second, review current opportunities for recognitions, i.e. our current certificates, proclamations, pins, Wall of Honor, our veteran pavers and flags, our remembrance trees programs. And third, provide direction on research and information they would like to see from other cities. And the subcommittee did note that they wanted to see research from both inside and outside of the state with similar recognition programs and policies. They basically wanted to see how other cities were, what kind of framework they were using, what kind of criteria they were using for recognitions, the nomination process, the phasing for different types of recognitions based on type and years of service, and any sort of qualitative and quantitative data points to support the nomination and recognition. Next slide, please. So staff spent March, based on subcommittee direction, conducting research and gathering and compiling the requested information from approximately 30 different cities, both inside the state and outside the state. On March 29, the subcommittee met with staff to go ahead and go over the matrix that consisted of the consolidated information to do the following. First, review the research results from other cities regarding their written policies and procedures for public recognitions. Second, compare and contrast the information that we had collected with the city's current practices. Third, provide direction on any nomination forms, residency requirements, contribution criteria, evaluation process, and form of public recognition based on tenure. And lastly, they provided us with direction on a Medal of Honor in pending public recognitions for community leaders that were already identified by council members under the new policy. Next. Okay, great. Thank you. So tonight, for consideration, we're actually gonna stop at a few different slides here and get some general direction and consensus to make sure we're going in the right direction with the full City Council based on the recommendations from the subcommittee. with the full City Council based on the recommendations from the subcommittee, and then we will be drafting the policy for approval by the full council at a future consent calendar item in City Council meeting. So, we're going to ask you to review the proposed public recognition ad hoc subcommittee, review our existing recognitions, review our newly proposed recognitions, review possible exclusionary language, and then provide any miscellaneous direction related to the public recognition policy. So, one of the first things that the subcommittee said is that there is a need for a public recognition ad hoc subcommittee. That subcommittee could be selected annually as a part of the City Council Subcommittee Review in January, and all public recognitions that include a nomination component would be consolidated under the subcommittee. Obviously, the standard certificates and proclamations would not necessarily go to subcommittee, but anything that has a nomination component. Subcommittee will work with staff to consider nominations in a calendar year and make recommendations to the full City Council for approval. The subcommittee would work similarly to other subcommittees that consider items on a calendar year basis and then report back to the full City Council for formal action. So, there is a little pause note there, you'll see, and you're going to see these pause buttons, and thus, on those particular slides, we are going to stop and ask for some direction. So, on this particular slide, is the council generally supportive of the creation of a public recognition ad hoc subcommittee to look at items that include a nomination component before they are sent to the full council? Does anybody have any concerns with that? Okay, doesn't look like it, so we will move on to the next slide. So, the types of recognitions that we have, we have certificates, we have proclamations, we have pins and medals, we have a newly proposed community leader award of distinction, council member award of recognition upon retirement, wall of honor, and then we have these miscellaneous categories, which is pretty much our memorials and monuments and naming of public facilities. We do, there is a note there that says, "Remembrance tree program, military banner program, and veterans paper program," for the purposes of public policy, I'm sorry, public recognitions policy. These programs will remain as standalone programs because they do not come to council. They already are administered through departments at the staff level, and there's no council approval component to it. All right, so, this slide should be super impressive to the council and the public because we provide certificates for everything. We provide certificates of achievement for student of the month, student of the year, Girl Scout, Eagle Scouts, you can see, youth in government. We provide certificates of appreciation, this is usually for former board and commission members, meeting entertainment, we provide an existing certificate of commendation. This is currently for our acts of bravery, heroism. We provide certificates of congratulations, sometimes we get requests for birthdays and anniversaries and retirements. We provide certificates for grand openings and ribbon cuttings, you guys see those sometimes. And we provide certificates of recognition for all kinds of, the Chamber Gala, Citizen of the Year, Business of the Year. We do certificates of remembrance, this is pretty much our in memoria and adjournments. And we also even do a certificate of welcome when our sister dignitaries visit us. So, as you can see, we have a certificate for everything. A certificate is not the same thing as a proclamation, which we'll talk about in a minute. But we are proposing to, at the subcommittee's recommendation, to keep our existing certificates as they are, as you can see, about four of them there are issued very commonly, and the other four are pretty rare. But basically, they are provided at the request of a Temecula resident, a community leader, a business, City Council member, and they can be signed by the mayor, the mayor pro tem, or their designee. Sometimes, for example, if we have a ribbon cutting, you know, we might have a particular council member sign that particular certificate. So, that is our existing certificate layout. There is that pause button again, so does anybody have any desired changes to our existing certificates?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, we can go ahead and, you know, have consensus on this, but, but what happens if we think of something else? Do we, does it have to come back to us to add, I don't know what it would be, but that one particular thing, or can we just add to it?
Well, so far, everything that we have ever been requested in our history has fallen under this.
Yeah, I can't think of anything else.
Yeah, somehow. But, yeah, if there is some sort of a desire, these are administratively processed, so we can, we can do, you know, we can, we can figure out through the language. Yeah, it's definitely scalable.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so is there any desire to make any tweaks or changes to our certificate program? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the next slide. All right, our existing proclamations. So, proclamations are only provided for two reasons, we only have two proclamations. The first one is there is some sort of a day, or week, or month of observation consistent with regional, state, and/or national recognition for public awareness or education purposes. So, this is where we'll find, you know, Domestic Violence Month, American Heart Association Month, all of those kinds of things. These are common because these typically come to, you see, they either come to City Council, or if they can't come to a City Council meeting, they are mailed off to the particular organization. And then, the second type of proclamation is actually a recognition of a day in celebration of a person, so a council member, a founding member of some sort of organization. These are very rare, it's typically upon retirement. So, these proclamations can be provided at the request and/or approval of the mayor, and it is proposed that they can be signed by the mayor, mayor pro tem, or their designee. And there is that pause button again, so, does council have any questions, comments, or proposed changes to our existing proclamations?
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, is this, on the, on number two proclamation for a person, is this where we make, you know, today is going to be Matt Ron Day?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Alice Sullivan Day, Matt Ron Day, Jeff Kubel Day, those, yeah. Yeah, we had one for Jeff as well. Okay, so I'm not seeing any direction to change, so we will go ahead and move on. All right, so, pins and medals, this one is a combination of existing and new. So, we are looking at two categories. The first one is our Boy Scout, Girl Scout pin, and this one would be very common. It's provided at the request and/or approval of the mayor. And then, the new one is actually the one that was proposed by Councilmember Alexander in regards to a Hero's Medal and Pin, so this one would be rare. It would be for acts of bravery and courage and the service of others. So, this is, this is actually taking it to that next level beyond that certificate. And we can definitely work with the subcommittee, the public recognition subcommittee, to design the pin and the medal and all of that kind of good stuff. But those are, that is the section for pins and medals. Does anybody have any thoughts, comments, questions, concerns? All right, moving along. All right, so, this one, the Community Leader Award of Distinction. This is a category that we are creating for awards that we have actually given in the past. So, this would be provided to a non-elected resident, a nonprofit, a business affiliate at resident request through council members and/or directly from a council member, and this particular award is signed by all council members. So, this is that award that perhaps when Alice had retired, we could have put it under this category. You know, a long-term nonprofit executive director retires. You know, we, we put these, those under this category so that we have someplace to consolidate versus considering unilaterally each one as it comes up. So, the criteria that the subcommittee proposes is first, to have a standard nomination form. And we're actually thinking of creating a nomination form that has a drop-down menu for all of our public recognitions. And then, that requisite nomination form can be submitted with supporting documentation electronically. They also suggested that there be some residency requirements for this. So, for this particular award, the nominee has been a resident, nonprofit, or business affiliate of the city for a minimum of five years, and we can always attach the, they can attach the proof of residency or affiliation with the nomination form. From a contribution standpoint, the nominee is well-known, their contributions are well-known and recognized by a significant segment of the community and their respective industry, so whether it's education, nonprofit, business, tourism. And that is evident by the nomination form and what is included in the nomination form. And then, that nomination form would actually go to the subcommittee for consideration, and the subcommittee would need to go ahead and approve to then move forward to the full City Council for official recognition. And then, for this particular award, the recipient would receive the frame award signed by all council members, our typical swag bag from the city, and other community industry recognitions and gifts at a public meeting. So, if we think back to, and I keep thinking back to Alice's, yeah. This is, this is the perfect kind of, if you apply this to her type of situation, you know, it could have been somebody at the chamber that submitted that nomination form with all of the backup material, and then we could have taken it to the subcommittee. The subcommittee felt that this nomination form and a member of the community or a resident filling out the nomination form and submitting it was really important because as council members have changed on the dais, and there has been considerable turnover in the community as well with retirements and stuff, council, council members might not have those longstanding known relationships with businesses and so on and so forth. So, it's really important that they be given the full data packet as they're considering these nominations. So, that is the proposal for all of those community leader awards of distinction, including those that council has brought up in the last couple of months, that, that, those would fall under this new, they would be kind of the test category for this as the subcommittee had desired. So, there's that pause button, council, has any questions, comments?
I do.
Questions, Stu?
Yeah, so, as I, as we were doing the residency requirement, I started thinking, okay, there's a lot of people in our Duluth area that consider themselves Temecula people. Wine country consider themselves Temecula people, and, and a lot of those people have contributed a lot to our community. And so, I almost hate to say proof of residency versus proof of impact on our community, or something along that line. Because I'd hate to exclude somebody who has really, for example, the guy who did the arches, Bob. What's his name? He lives out in Duluth, you know, yet he, he made a huge impact in, you know, our community by creating those arches. So, so it's, it's things like that, they kind of, I, I, I think we should change that to more proof of impact to our community, or, or something along that line.
Okay, yeah, we can definitely do that. The idea was, is, so if somebody comes into our community and does one thing, are they then eligible for this particular award? So, if a contractor, let's say somebody comes in and builds an arch for us, are they then eligible for this, or do you want some sort of tenure associated with that?
You know, I was, I was kind of thinking the same things, Stu. Honestly, because I think there's, you know, it, it kind of depends on what that one thing is, right? If it's that monumental a contribution to our community, just because they may be living in Morgan Hill.
Right.
You know, just on the other side of the line, it'd be a shame not to, to recognize that. So, the residency requirement kind of hit me too, yeah.
Well, I would, I like to, to me, the definition of impact on our community, it has to be defined as what kind of impact to our community has this individual, or, yeah, this is for a community leader, yeah. So, I, I would be more of the persuasion to say, you know, because again, wine country, it's full of people who've lived here for 30, 40, 50 years that have made a huge impact on the city of Temecula based on their winery out there, and so.
So, we can simply remove the residency requirement?
Yeah.
Because the contribution requirement, so, if you'll notice in number three, the contributions of the nominee are well-known and recognized by a significant segment of the community and their respective industry as outlined in the nomination form. So, that's where your impact comes in. So, if you guys, we, if you want to just eliminate the residency requirement, we can do that.
Zach?
Yeah, and I was, so thank you, Director Joel, for bringing that up, because I was going to say the contributions, right, in that next part. And then, be mindful, it's still going to go to a council subcommittee and then go before the council, so at that point, you know, because I am a little on the fence about it. You know, people that live here, this is our town and the like. So, I, I wouldn't want to just sort of open it up, but I, I'm willing to, you know, remove that, knowing that it goes to the subcommittee and then full council for approval. I think that's enough of a check and balance in that system that it, that it satisfies my concerns with removing the residency.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir?
Is it, do we understand that we're looking for something with a community benefit within, or community impact within our sphere of influence? So, moving forward, keeping that in mind is the flavor interpretation of that as we're making recommendations?
Yeah.
Okay, so on this one, with consensus from, and general direction from council, we will simply remove the residency requirement and then, and stick to the contributions piece.
I still have a question.
Edwards?
So, Randy, we used to have, at a certain time of year, we'd be accepting nominations for like the Good Neighbor or the Citizen of the Year, and that was a one-time, certain time of year thing. Are all of these open for always, are there no deadlines, no window of opportunity? Because they're going to come from, suggestions from residents, so they can do it anytime, right?
Yes, because folks from our community might be retiring at any time, right? So, so instead of having like an annual deadline, it's, it's more of an ongoing and considered, you know, unilaterally.
Mm-hmm, that's good, okay, thanks.
Okay, I think we're good on this one? All right, so, next one. All right, so, Councilmember Award of Recognition Upon Retirement. So, this is fun because we've had an opportunity to do this a couple of times in the eight years that I've been here, and there really hasn't been a policy, but there have been some norms that have been established. So, based on council subcommittee discussion, this is what they are proposing. This is provided at the request of a council member, and it is something that is signed by all council members. We are proposing an internal form for this with supporting documentation that we can, staff can complete, working with the nominating council member or members. And, and the reason for this, again, is because not all council members may have been working with each other very, for very long. We might have a brand-new council member that is, is, you know, honoring a retiring council member. So, this provides them with the ability to have that information about what a council member has done in their years of service. So, we can go ahead and work with the nominating council member to, to fill out that internal form. The, with respect to service, the retiring council member has completed a minimum of one full term if elected, or the whole of an unexpired term if appointed. So, this really goes to the, if you leave midterm thing, we're not going to, you know, if you resign unexpectedly. This is, this is more about, if there is a vacancy and you were appointed and you served the whole appointment, then you are eligible to be, deserve recognition. If you retire, certainly, and fulfill all of your term, you are eligible. The nominee receives subcommittee recommendation for recognition by the full City Council. The public recognition, okay, this is when the subcommittee got into kind of the tiering. So council member Edwards, do you have a question? Cause I.
No.
Okay, okay. So public recognition, the member receives recognition based on tenure with optional community recognitions and gifts at the public meeting. While board and commission service is noted as a part of the presentation, it is not counted towards the years of service or purposes of recognition categories below. So category number one, one term. If you have completed one full term, you will receive an engraved plaque with years of service, the, the highly coveted street sign and the swag bag by the city. Two terms, this means you have completed eight to 12 years. You will receive the engraved plaque with years of service, a framed proclamation recognizing your retirement date as your day, the coveted street sign and the swag bag by the city. And if you have done four terms and beyond, 16 years, you will receive the shadow box that we have become accustomed to for the 20 years, for the, the ones that we gave to Mike Nagar and Ron Roberts, the shadow box with the engraved proclamation, key to the city, the coveted street sign and the swag bag by the city. So there's that pause button. So this is what is proposed for council member award of recognition upon retirement. Any questions, comments, suggestions? All right, moving on to the next. Okay, so we have the wall of honor and our policy is a little bit dated. It's dated to September 1999. The purpose you could see there was to honor and recognize individuals who have made an outstanding contribution over a significant period of time. And then the criteria was basically that the individual has to have made a major contribution to improve the quality of life for residents. And members of service clubs, council members, commissioners, city staff and residents were all, are all eligible. We, we, if we want to fold this into the public policy recognitions, then there are three, for consistency purposes, there are three points of direction we are looking for. Should there be a residency and/or affiliate requirement? I know we just got rid of the residency requirement for the others, so we, we can eliminate that for this as well from consideration. Should the nomination form be combined with the singular nomination form for all public recognitions with the dropdown option? And should the wall of honor subcommittee be combined with, with the singular public recognition subcommittee selected annually? So that it's, because it's council approving both. So the subcommittee's recommendation was that it be rolled up into the public recognitions policy subcommittee. So there's that pause button. Any thoughts, comments?
I do.
Ms. Edwards.
On item number one, should there be any residency and/or affiliate requirements like other recognitions? And you know, we've done away with that for the other. But the wall of honor is very.
Specific.
Specific and very special. It's like the ultimate recognition. So I really would like to leave that as a resident. I know other people are going to, you know, outside people might do great things for the city of Temecula and we are honoring them the other way. So I really would like to leave the wall of honor. And even, you know, over the years, we, and I've served on that committee, we received recommendations about, you know, certain people. And it's really difficult, even though they've done, you know, some wonderful things, we really did reserve that for specific and very obvious and dedicated acts of, you know, whatever, volunteerism or other things. So, and I'd, I'd kind of like to leave it that way.
And then the question is also, what is the, how many years would you, on the other, it was proposed at least five. What would you like to consider for this?
Well, I don't know that we, you know, we didn't really consider any years, but if you look at people who are on there, they, they were long-term servant, you know, servants in one way or another, whether they were staff or city council members or like, you know, the Moores, Peg and Jimmy and, and those kinds of people. In the Farn Box, yes. And to do those kinds of significant things, it, it takes years sometimes. So I kind of like to leave that. I haven't really thought about a number of years, so I don't know. I would like to hear what everybody else says.
So, you're going to go?
Oh, go ahead.
So I have to agree with, with Mary Ann because for me, the same thing is this is definitely something that we should have the tag for residency on, in my opinion. I'm thinking, number that just came to my head is maybe 10 years at least, a decade?
I, I thought of that.
I'm thinking 10 years. I don't know what you guys think.
Everybody on there would certainly, I mean, you know, certainly.
At least, yeah.
Stu?
At, at first I was, I was going to say, I, I don't necessarily need to have a number on there. But yeah, it's true, 10 years would kind of put that. Seal on that person as a real Temecula resident slash impactor in our community. So I like it.
Zach?
Thank you. Definitely needs to be a residency requirement for this. And it's hard to, if you actually go out and look at the wall, I mean, I don't think we ever thought about the years on those for sure, but there's probably 20 plus is probably honestly what it is.
Yeah.
If I was going to throw out a, a, a year, I would say 20. But I mean, I think again, it goes to the subcommittee, it goes to full council, you're going to know immediately when the name comes forward, their contributions, they're going to precede them. And I think the folks that will, will be on this will, will all be 20 plus year residents.
Well, you know what, we could, Mr. Mayor, we could obviously set the minimum at 10.
Yeah.
And then use discretion when, for that, that committee, use discretion.
I think the subcommittee and the council, they'll know.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good to me.
And, and that'll help staff as well, so that when we get in an application, it'll kind of prevent somebody who's only been here for a few years, if a friendly neighbor wants to nominate them for the wall of honor, it'll make them stop.
Yeah.
You know, so, and are, is the council okay with us combining this with the public policy?
Yes.
Subcommittee and into the singular nomination form? Okay, great. All right, next slide. All right, so this is the, so we needed a kind of like a catch-all. So this is the catch-all, the memorial monument facility naming. This is provided to an elected or non-elected individual or group at resident request through council members or directly from council members. And the criteria here, again, there's a nomination form that is submitted by a resident or a council member. Residency nominee has been a resident, nonprofit or business affiliate. The subcommittee agreed to a minimum of 10 years. So the idea was is, and proof of residency and affiliation, irrespective of whether they're a resident or not, if they're a business that's affiliated with the city for over 10 years, that's why it says both residency and affiliation. Contributions, nominee contributions are well-known, recognized by a significant segment of the community, respective industry, as outlined in the nomination form. Here's the, here's the, kind of the, what makes this one bigger is such contributions exceed all other contributions in community value in that there is no other public recognition that can be applied for this. So this is so big that it's beyond a certificate, beyond a proclamation, beyond, you know, all of those other things. And then goes to subcommittee. And then for this one, the subcommittee has to, both members have to agree to go ahead and forward it to the city council like the others. And then at the public recognition, for the public recognition piece, the nominee would receive the memorial monument facility name recognition based on city council approval and direction. So we're keeping that part generic because these things are site-specific, relationship-specific, design-specific, logo-specific. So when it comes before the city council, it's at that time, the city council can say, okay, we want this particular monument located at such and such a location and the design should fit with that park or whatever else that they want to. But this is basically to get the nominee into the door for this particular type of consideration. So there's the pause button. Is there anything?
I have, I have one.
Ms. Edwards.
Since we set the 10-year minimum on the previous recognition, this is a memorial, a monument or facility and it is in perpetuity. So to me, that raises the bar even higher. You know, I don't want to put this out of reach for, you know, any individual, but because this is, you know, I mean, this is the ultimate. And so I think I would set this one at a minimum of 15 or maybe even 20. I'd like to hear what everybody else says, though.
Zach?
Thank you, Mayor. Wholeheartedly agree, if this is the pinnacle, I, I don't see how we can set it at 10 years. I think it's got to probably be 20 minimum, 25 maybe. My only concern is if someone were to pass away prematurely and they certainly would never reach that mark, but they certainly made, you know, contributions. So maybe under those circumstances, we could look at waiving it to, to, you know, the amount of time they spend here. Say someone lived here for 19 years or something, right? I would think we would need to be flexible on that. But if we're going to erect a memorial or a monument or name a facility, I want to say 25 years. I want to say someone that's been here, someone's invested, someone's spent the time, built relationships, clearly at that point, they deserve it. I don't, I don't think 10 years even does it justice.
Knowing, knowing that we're, that nothing's going to happen, nothing's going to impact the current wall of honor, I'm trying to think of all the people that are on there and do they all, not all of them would reach 25 years. They would all reach 20, I'm sure.
Well, the walls of honor is still at 10.
No, I mean, yeah, but I, I mean, I'm just using that as an example. You know, the people that made those significant contributions and there may be only a couple, of course, Peg and Jimmy Moore, that would go, you know, probably that long and maybe a couple of others, but there'd be some that, that are even on the wall of honor. I'm just trying to look at tenure, you know, and what's realistic for tenure. 25 is, especially since we've been a city 32. I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm more prone to go with 20 because if you, I mean, just for what I, the reason I said.
I, I, go ahead, Stu.
I was just going to say, this is going to be such a rare thing.
Yeah.
And so, you know, 20 years, I, I'd say like Zach is a minimum.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and so, but I, again, I'd hate to set the bar too, too high, but the, the, the rarity, we're going to name something after someone is very, very remote. So, so that's, that's why, you know, the 20 years is fine. And if you're listening, we're not going to be naming anybody facilities after you. So don't, don't apply because it's going to be very, very, very rare, so.
Yep, I, I'd agree. I'd look to some of our past namings though, and, and trying to think of a handful of those that didn't hit the 20-year mark yet, we still recognize.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to think of.
That's, I, I think that's the, the challenge there.
24 or 25, there are people who wouldn't have.
There, well, yeah, so I think the, you know, it definitely needs to be more than 10 years.
Oh, yes.
So maybe what I'm hearing is there's somewhere maybe in the middle that we can meet? And if the bar is just higher, then it's higher, you know?
Well, and ultimately it comes down to the committee.
Right.
Exactly.
Same thing, right? Yeah, and so.
And this is a council policy that can easily be changed and/or waived for exceptions by the city council. So we can set it at 20 as a minimum to impress upon any that are submitting nominations, that this is kind of like that, that pinnacle. On the other hand, we can set it at 15 as well to make it a little bit more attainable. Like you said, it is something that at the end of the day, the subcommittee is going to be able to say no to anyway.
I don't want it more attainable.
No.
I mean, this is, it's a, this is serious.
So then we can definitely set it at, at 20. And I do want to clarify that residency requirement right there. It does say nominee has been a resident, nonprofit or business affiliate. And this would be true of the wall of honor as well because a former city council.
City manager.
City manager, Sean Nelson is, is on that wall of honor and wasn't necessarily a Temecula resident. But we want to make sure that the residency language is inclusive of the contributors, right? So that's why we've provided language that says resident, nonprofit or business affiliate to keep it a little bit broad, to allow you guys some flexibility to squeeze in who you need to.
And, and you know, I think it's also going to, it's also going to be, you know, related to the level of service. Now, I know we're getting kind of into the gray area here, but, and I'll use Jim, Jimmy and Peg as another one, let's say, because they moved away for a while. And so I'm not sure what their total number of years was, but if Jimmy and Peg only came up to 17 years, I would still want to consider them for the, you know, something like this maybe, but, and it could be, you know, it, it could be anybody reaching that criteria. So I think this might be something that would be subjective and maybe that's final decision. And they, you know, the subcommittee would have to justify that decision, I think. And then it would come to us and we can at least discuss it, so.
Do you think that we would get a lot of people who would be nominated?
Uh-uh, I don't.
And that's what I'm thinking, you know? I mean, I'm fine with 20. I mean, if that's, if that's what the council wants, I'm, but I'm just thinking maybe what you were kind of moving at is 15 a better?
I, I don't think we should do 15. I mean, I said 15 because I was really afraid to say 20, but I.
Well, again, it's subjective, right? So if there's extenuating circumstances, whatever it is.
Then let's do it.
The council still has the opportunity to review it, so.
I mean, it's that special to me.
Right.
You know, so.
But it just kind of sets the.
The bar.
The bar of what the expectation is. But obviously if there's, whatever happens, happens, right?
Yeah, sounds good.
All right, so I think we have consensus to keep the residency requirement, whether we're talking about the wall of honor or any of these memorial monument facility naming, broad enough to include residents and business affiliates like this former city manager. And then for the wall of honor, it is 10 years and for the memorial monument facility naming, it is 20 years. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on. So the next slide, all right. So the subcommittee actually for the memorials, this pretty much applies to the memorial monument facility naming. It doesn't apply to our standard certificates and proclamations. Would, would the council like to have some exclusionary language for certain purposes? Marietta has similar language, other cities have similar language. That basically the, they won't consider anything related to political, religious, lifestyle ideology, commercial purposes, you know, a memorial that says, you know, John's car dealership, you know, or whatever. Of course, again, this would not apply to our standard certificates and proclamations because we do ribbon cuttings for everyone. We do, you know, chamber annual awards for all businesses, nonprofits, religious organizations and stuff. Our proclamations are based on state and federal templates. So the, the subcommittee actually added, the only language that they added was the commercial, because they wanted it, that part in there. But the other language, political, religious, lifestyle ideology came directly from Marietta and a few other cities. So any thoughts on that?
I have a question. So does that mean that you can't recognize a pastor or a rabbi or an Imam or anything?
So, so again, this does not apply to standard certificates or proclamations. This is for like your memorials, monuments, wall of honor, non-standardized singular requests, so that you don't have John's car dealership on the wall of honor, right? Cause that's commercial. If you wanted to honor John, that's fine, but you wouldn't have necessarily a monument for, you know, commercial purposes or for political purposes or any of that.
Right. Okay.
I'll go first, or second. The lifestyle ideology, what were some of the examples that the subcommittee came up for, what is lifestyle ideology?
This language does directly from Marietta's. So the only thing, I don't know.
Brandon Lane, are you still here?
Yeah, Brandon is gone. I, I, I think this, this particular piece falls into subcommittee area as well for review and, and forward. and, and forward to the city council as they deem appropriate. But the, the Marietta's verbatim language is political, religious, lifestyle ideology shall be excluded from consideration, and so we just simply added commercial.
Does that mean like the mother of the year would be excluded?
Well, the commercial makes a ton of sense. Like the John's Car Dealership.
Well, the political, like, for example, if somebody was to want to name a public facility, you know, ex-political party room, you would not consider that, it would be excluded.
Ronald Reagan Sports Park notwithstanding.
Well, he's.
Yeah, but it's, it's not party affiliated, it's the individual.
I'm, I'm leaning towards adding that language, honestly, to exclude the political, religious, and what was it again?
Political, religious, lifestyle, ideology, and commercial.
And commercial.
You like to see it added in?
Using that exclusionary language, saying, you know, we can't have a political monument, or we can't name something, you know, whatever.
But you could still, you could still name something after a pastor, but you just wouldn't say pastor, first Methodist, you know, or first Baptist, or first, you know, whatever, but you'd still use the title, right?
Well, and then, you know, the, the political side of things, we have to be mindful of the entire community, right?
Right.
There's probably value in that as well.
Okay.
Which is what the subcommittee was recommending and as well.
And, and I think there's always exceptions, right? So let's pretend there's a, you know, significant barber shop that was a staple of the community for, for generations, right? And you just wanted to, you know, that the end of that era, you know, God forbid it ever comes, you know, and maybe it needs to be recognized within the community.
Like if everybody goes bald all of a sudden.
I mean, you know, I'm sure that there would be, you know, opportunity for exceptions to be made under, you know, certain circumstances because of the contribution that was made, and that it doesn't fall under something that's, you know, necessarily hostile to.
But the contribution would have been made by the.
Individual.
Individual, rather.
Fair enough, but, you know, but, but there's still, you know, business changes hands, it goes through multiple, you know what I mean? There's, there's always an exception to the rule, and I think that's kind of what, you know, how I view this, is that it's a good guideline, but look, if there's something that, that pops up that's so significant, then, you know, I think there's, there's an opportunity for recognition regardless, and that's up to the council and subcommittees to look at.
And I, I think so. I, I need some clarity on the ideology segment. I don't, I mean, can somebody make an example of what that would be? And I think it's fine, I just don't understand what it is.
Would be considered like what, the whole reason we've really looked at this, as far as for, you know, pro-life, pro-choice, whatever that would look like. I think that's kind of, I would assume where Marietta is going with it.
Okay.
So that's kind of that ideology, where you have those two sides contradicting, we're going to have arguments, no reason to, let's just squish it, keep it simple, keep it honoring, and that's really.
So we would have to take a stand, really, one side or the other, and that's what we want to avoid.
Avoid.
Okay.
Exactly.
Okay, got it. I just need an example, so I could, okay, great.
Okay.
Yep.
So I am hearing general consensus from the city council to go ahead and include this particular exclusionary language in the policy, okay?
Just don't tell Marietta we're being like them.
Yeah.
Well, technically, we're not, because we added commercial.
Ah, there we go.
Hey.
Bet they add commercial later on.
So that concludes all of the pause slides, so at this point, we have our general direction from the city council. If the city council would like to go ahead and take a vote on the general direction, they're welcome to, if not, we can just note it as general direction. For next steps, the policy for the city council will be drafted based on this final direction and put on a future city council agenda under a consent calendar, and if there is anything that you all see in the policy, it could always be pulled off of the consent as needed.
How would you like to proceed, Mr. Mayor?
Well, just what she said, I think, yeah, general direction. Let's bring the policy back for approval.
Yep. Fine. So you don't need anything from us right now?
No.
Nope, I think we're good. That concludes the item.
Thank you.
Good job, you guys.
All right, item number 25, consider development of aquatic center at request of council member Stuart, and I think we have a brief staff report for Ms. Russo.
Yes, indeed, we do. If we can pull up the, oh, there we go, sorry, it's just taking a second to load on my computer. Okay, so at the last council meeting on May 10th, the city council unanimously approved the placement of this item on today's agenda at the request of council member Stuart. So I just wanted to provide a little overview of aquatic centers, what they typically entail, and what we're kind of discussing today. So just as a framework, just as kind of where we are currently, for the city of Temecula, our aquatics amenities include a 25-yard pool at the CRC and a future 25-yard pool at the MRC, which is slated to open sometime spring, summer 2023. A 25-yard pool is the standard size for lower-level competition, so high school teams compete in 25-yard pools, club teams, a lot of times compete in 25-yard pools, but you'll hear a lot of references to an Olympic-sized pool, which is 50 meters, and so 50 meters is the length for a lot of collegiate competitions, Olympics, Junior Olympics, and so forth. Now, in addition to our year-round operations at the CRC pool and eventually at the MRC pool, we have some seasonal amenities we use, specifically through joint use with Temecula Valley Unified School District. We routinely, each summer, use the facilities at Temecula Elementary School and Chaparral High School. Both of those are also 25-yard pools. The Chaparral site includes a second pool as well. This year, just for this summer only, CHS, the Chaparral Pool is going to be under renovation, so we have a temporary joint use, they're allowing us to use the TVHS pool in lieu of the CHS pool, so I have a little typo there on the slide. But typically, Temecula Elementary, Chaparral, we use those seasonally every single year. In addition to those pools, we have some other aquatics-type amenities, which include splashpads at the Eagle Soar Park and a future splashpad at the CRC. Next slide, please. So what do we do at those facilities? Well, primarily, first and foremost, we offer swim lessons for all ages and abilities. So that includes everything from your traditional group swim lessons you think of with lots of little kids showing up, from the very beginning pre-swimmers all the way up to, you know, older kids. We also offer private and semi-private lessons, and we have adaptive swim lessons for individuals with special needs. In addition to those swim lessons, we offer aquatics fitness programs year-round, they're very, very popular, we've expanded them probably four or five-fold over the last, maybe eight or 10 years or so. We have a robust master swim program, which people swim in the mornings. We have instructional classes for water polo. We do have rentals for some swim clubs locally. We have lap swim and public recreational swim. We also have family nights and dedicated special needs family nights. We also have pool time for our day camp campers during the summer, and we have very extensive training programs, as you heard referenced earlier, for lifeguards and also for volunteers. And one of the things that's unique that we do, that's helped build such a robust water safety professional group within the city, is that we bring in young kids as volunteers, we train them to be volunteers, they get to buddy and pair up with a lifeguard, and then when they're old enough, then they can apply to be lifeguards, and then they go on, and several of those lifeguards have ended up becoming our full-time staff eventually. So we have a great pipeline, and those kids are just trained, you know, from beginning to end. Next slide, please. So now, what do we, what do we mean when we talk about an aquatic center? So we have a pool at a recreation center, which is a pretty common model. Some cities and some private facilities have an aquatic center, which would typically include multiple pools. Oftentimes, there's at least one 50-meter or Olympic-sized pool, and then there may be one or more smaller pools used for other programs. Typically, they would include other amenities, such as diving platforms or boards and a diving well, which you can kind of see in that picture there, the lower pool towards the right-hand side, you can see where it's much deeper at the end by those diving platforms. Generally, these aquatic centers host a full range of instructional, educational, competitive, and recreational programs, and typically, they are home to one or more competitive teams. So this one you see here on the left is the Marguerite Aquatic Center in Mission Viejo, it was renovated just a couple of years ago, and it's the home of the Nata Dóreas, which are a nationally-recognized competitive team. In addition, this type of facility provides the opportunity to host much larger regional or state, even statewide meets and competitions. So again, this example, Marguerite Aquatic Center, just for reference, it's five acres, it has two locker rooms, three pools, it has a dive tower with the 10-meter, seven-and-a-half-meter, five-meter, three-meter, one-meter platform, so the entire range of platform diving, an eight-lane competitive swimming pool, and then seating, shade, all the things you would expect to go along with that, excuse me, changing rooms, scoreboards, and dry land training facilities. So that's kind of an idea of what we'd be looking at for an actual aquatic center. Next slide, please. Now, in terms of the closest regional aquatic center, and this is something we heard from a lot of the public commenters who came in to speak on this item, is how far they have to drive to utilize an Olympic-sized pool. So the closest Olympic-sized pools are shown here with the green circles. We have, just starting from your upper right, Palm Springs, then Drop Zone, which is a private water park, but it does have a 50-meter pool, which they rent out. Then going over to Irvine, we have the Woollett Aquatic Center, then down to Mission Viejo, the Marguerite Aquatic Center, which is the one you just saw. Heading down to Oceanside is the William Wagner Aquatic Center, and then finally, in Carlsbad, is the Agonorte Aquatic Center. And these range, the closest one is Drop Zone, which is just over 20 miles away, and they go up to, you know, Palm Springs and William Woollett, 60 to 70 miles away. Next slide, please. And just to give you a sense, this is a very quick overview of what we could just find, you know, quickly, in terms of, you know, costs and amenities. Obviously, there's a lot more in-depth, more granular study that could be done in terms of costing these things out, but just so you have a frame of reference here, if you look at the William Wagner Aquatic Center, which is your second column over from the left, that one opened in 2021, the construction cost was about 20 million, and they estimate the annual operating cost is about 1.6 million. On some of them, we were able to find revenue figures, you can see to the left there for Woollett, they're estimating their annual operating cost is about 1.8 million, and their annual revenue is about 1.1. Mission Viejo, the one we just showed you, is the most recent to have opened, but it was a renovation, not a new construction, so their project cost for that was 11 million, but that was a renovation, and we don't really have a good sense for what that would have been, you know, if you were looking at just ground-up construction. So again, this just provides you a couple of little touchpoints on that, and I believe that concludes the presentation at this point, so if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them, and otherwise.
All right, let's start with questions. Anybody? No?
I do.
Mary Ann.
You know, we always look at, I don't say always, but we consider return on investment, how many residents will be impacted, positively impacted, or how many kids or, or whatever, and then if there's a deficit, how do we offset the cost? Because we want to, you know, save as much as we can. So are we getting the value of this project based on our residents that are driving long distances? We made, we made that case, and I also heard them talk about having, you know, tournaments or, you know, interactive, you know, competitions. I mean, 19,800, I mean, the, the, these are really big numbers, so how do we see that? On the other hand, we build our parks, knowing that there's no profit in building parks, so we do it as an amenity. How are we considering this? Are we considering it as a strict amenity or, or investment, or what?
So here's, here's my thought. This is why I wanted to bring this forward and create a subcommittee to look into it a little deeper, because we just saw the cost of building the facility plus the maintenance cost, and we, we saw what the return is, but we didn't see, when they had the tournaments, what was their revenue intake from the hotels, from the restaurants?
Right.
So there's an ancillary business opportunity that comes along with something that's going to bring a massive, yeah, tournament there. So, so that's why we need to kind of do a little deeper dive, pardon the pun, and, and look at the, the full impacts, if we had a facility like this, because we have had a lot of people ask for this for many, many years. This is not, you know, just this year, it's, it's been a long time, and, and, you know, I'm, I'm the first one to tell you, if it doesn't pencil, it doesn't pencil, but I, I think we owe it to the public and those, those families who are doing this, and, and who knows how many other families would participate if they didn't have to drive their kid 45 miles or 30 miles to the nearest, so, so I think, I think that's why I wanted to create the subcommittee, so we can look at this, you know, more in-depth and kind of, kind of pull some of these numbers, extract as much as we can, so we can actually make a intelligent decision on this. So that's what I, all I'm asking is, let's, let's just form a subcommittee, let's look at this at a, at a deeper, longer look at it, and, and make a determination.
And you answered my question, too, because you don't have the answers to that either, and I want, I'd like to, I'd like to know all that.
Exactly.
Zach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the cleanest path for this discussion is subcommittee. I think one exists, the Parks and Rec Subcommittee, we could go there, I don't know that we need to create an additional subcommittee, but it's certainly worth the conversation, and if this is something that, you know, the full council wants to add to a CIP, and we just had our budget workshop, and we see the CIP, and, and that's, again, I think it's just the, the cleanest way to do it, is to just have the subcommittee, much like we do everything, so supportive of that.
All right, simple, I'll just, let's do a subcommittee.
Okay.
All right. Preference of going to Parks and Rec?
Right.
Creating a separate?
That's, that's the question.
Well, I, I'm kind of leaning towards doing a separate one, because this involves infill, it involves property, you know.
Oh, okay.
Agreed.
I don't know.
But Stu's on Parks and Rec, this is kind of his baby, so.
Well, I would, I would have him on the subcommittee anyway.
Let's just keep it in Parks and Rec.
Yeah, yeah, I'm totally good with that.
Okay.
I don't have any problems with that.
Yeah, that'd be easy.
Are you on Parks and Rec, Zach?
I am, and that's the cleanest way. We don't need to create something, this is, this is Parks and Rec.
Knowing as long, you're going to consider, you know, every aspect, you know, it's a, it's an infill project, it's property acquisition, it's, you know, it's, yeah, that's fine, I think that's a great idea.
Great. Do we need a vote on that? Yes, so I'd look for a motion in a second.
Move a proofless stated.
Second.
All right, please cast. Let's see, future agenda items, anyone have anything for future council meeting? Seeing nothing, city managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, earlier Cass mentioned during her Yak report that it was graduation season again, and, and for so many out there, it really is an amazing time, and that's especially true for students as well as teachers, to be realizing and appreciating graduation during a period of COVID. And so I think we should really celebrate and acknowledge that, I see some smiles here, maybe that's to be mentioned, but that's at the high school level as well as the, the college level, too. And so for those of you who are graduating, and for those proud parents, we just want to say thank you, job well done, and for Erin Kimberley and London Adams, we're very proud of you. So that concludes my report.
Yes, we are.
Thank you, sir. All right, city attorney.
I have no report tonight, there are no actions in closed session.
All right, and Ms. Edwards, I think you had a statement for closing the meeting this evening.
Yeah, I, you know, I think in light of the tragedies that have taken place, the recent tragedies today, and I think, when I left the house, I don't know if there were as many as 18 victims in the most recent shooting, and I, you know, just like to let everyone know that our hearts go out to those families, and school, it, it is a community-wide impact, and I'd like to adjourn the meeting in the name of everyone that we need to remember in that incident.
All right, thank you so much, and we'll go ahead and adjourn in the memory and support of those families in our communities there. Thank you so much, and have a good evening.